And we've been joined with by candidate Sherri Gay-Dunyogo. But we're going to begin this second round, you have an opportunity to answer that particular question. We're going to start with you, Ms. Pugh, and Arma, if you can, Armin, excuse me, if you can begin your questions, sir.
Great. Thanks again for being here tonight, and good evening. Few cities have as decentralized and complex of a school system as Detroit. Hundred charter schools, fifteen EAA schools, Detroit Public Schools have roughly eighty schools, financial distress. Outside of asking for more money, which we all probably agree we need, what else would you advocate for in Lansing to make our school system work for our kids and families?
So, that's a great question. Education is definitely one of the key issues that Detroit and really the state of Michigan is facing with the lack of quality education. One thing that we do need to do is we really need to focus on curriculum, making sure that our kids have core curriculum. We also need to focus on making sure that all students at every stage, so pre-K, middle school, and high school, have the tools that they need to be able to succeed, to be a global competitor and a good citizen.
Thank you.
The first thing I think I need to focus on as a state rep is management. It's obvious that our schools are in disarray because they've been mismanaged financially, academically, socially, recreationally, so that's where I would start. I would start with the management of the school systems from the very, very top, including supporting teachers who are responsible for teaching our children.
Ms. Hampton?
Thank you. Yes, education is very important, something that's definitely on my platform. Definitely we need to focus on the curriculum and changing that and just... Education is part of my platform, I want to try to increase the funding. I also want our K-12 schools to focus more on vocational and technological programs and entrepreneurial programs in addition to promoting college.
Thank you. Ms. Gay-Dunyogo?
Thank you, I'm answering both questions.
No, just this question that was posed.
Just this one. Thank you. As the only educator on the panel, first of all, I apologize for my tardiness, I had to serve at a funeral today for a longstanding member of Brightmore, Ms. Ora Williams, her son passed, and I'm just coming from there. But on the way here, a bus hit a car, and they are using a axe to chop the car out of the bus on Grand River and Grandland right now, so pray for those people. Educator, as the only educator candidate that is running, teaching in the classroom for seven years, science, we got to get parental involvement. We got to make sure that we also deal with the issue with the cap that's on charter schools.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have uncapped charter schools, they are not being regulated properly, and so we need to make sure that we address that.
Thank you. We have to stay to our time limits.
Okay.
Thirty seconds per candidate, I think you may have missed that.
Oh, thirty seconds.
Yep, if you look right here, you see the gentleman holding up the sign.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With regards to your comments, we are one of few states, but we do know that there are states where, who are actually making strides and gains with kind of a various governance structure that they have in place. And one of the things that stands out about those states as opposed to Michigan is that they have an extremely strong State Department of Education and their State Board of Education, the structure of that is really strong. And so, we start to talk about implementing the Common Core, we start to talk about curriculum, we start to talk about supports for students, and really making sure that we're doing a good job of standardizing that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We need to rely on the Michigan Department of Ed and our state superintendent.
Thank you. Candidates, again, if you can please make sure you stay aware of the timekeeper. All right. Ms. Tanya Morgan?
Good evening. The mayor, Duggan, and the governor have mentioned the need for stabilizing Detroit's neighborhoods and building strong communities. How should Michigan, as you, if you are to win your seat, how would Michigan and how would you participate in helping Michigan to continue to address the foreclosure crisis?
Start with Ms. Gay-Dunyogo, yes.
Oh, thank you. You said Mayor Duggan, yes, thank you. Mayor Duggan, in a reception last night for me, stated some of the same things, so I agree. Working directly with all levels of government. I worked for Detroit City Council for nine and a half years, so I have legislative experience, understand city ordinance and city government. So, working along with our city council members, our state legislators, our Wayne County, and creating efficiencies in more federal programs that provide support to make sure that we keep families in their homes. What Fannie Mae has done, what the banks have done, we need to hold them accountable because displacing people and having blight in our community is unacceptable. They owe us.
Thank you. Ms. Hampton?
Thank you. Hi. Stopping predatory lending will be the number one thing. Continue to working with all levels of government and encouraging the use, encouraging home ownership and not encouraging rental. I think encouraging home ownership is, will help with stopping.
Thank you. Mr. Mohammed?
I think it's extremely important to continue to restore the financial base for homeowners. We're being continuously taxed, we're being continuously assessed money, and it's very difficult to operate a household, so we need to address the financial base and financial money that is available to homeowners.
And Ms. Pugh?
Thank you. I think it's a two-pronged issue, so one is going to deal with the predatory lending piece of it, but the other piece, which is the most important piece to stopping foreclosure, is to make sure that people are working. If you're working, then you can afford to pay, and that's what we've got to focus on. We have got to focus on getting people back to work so that they can pay their mortgage and stay, and taxes, and stay in their home. For people that are unable to do so, we need to strengthen our federal programs and our state programs to make sure that we can help people that need to stay in their home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells? Stallworth, my apologies, Will Stallworth.
They're both my name.
Yes.
So, I just want to say that I'm really happy that we have a mayor who is really focused on this, and I do agree in the interest of time with some of the things that have already been stated. But the other thing that we have to make sure that we keep an eye on, and very important when we start to talk about stabilizing our communities, is the fact that families want to move to a place where they can trust that they can send their children to the school in the neighborhood, and it's not too much of a problem for them. They want to know that that area that they live in is going to be safe, and that they have access to groceries and things like that. So, when we start to think about that, those are some of the things that I would be interested in focusing on.
Thank you. And for our last question from the panel, we're going to start with Mr. Mohammed. We're going to go to Ms. Pugh at that point. Question I have is, do you support regional transportation for the metropolitan Detroit area? And if so, what will you do if elected to public office to establish a comprehensive regional transportation system? If you do not, please, in thirty seconds, explain why.
I do support the regional transportation system. It is a means of getting employees viably to their jobs, to get people to facilities for medical treatment, and I would most certainly be in favor of supporting regional transportation systems. What I would do is to support companies that want to come in and establish systems for us. Many have worked in many different places, and we can do it also.
Thank you. Ms. Pugh?
I do support regional transportation as well. We need to make sure that people can get to work, people work outside of Detroit, and that's going to be key to make sure that we have reliable transportation to get them there. As a state legislator, I would make sure that it's funded properly and that Detroit gets its fair share, because as we know, with most of the regional authorities, sometimes and most times, Detroit gets the lower end of the stick. So, we need to make sure that with Detroit being the highest population for traveling, that we get the fair share. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Will Stallworth?
I am in support of regional transportation, and as you pointed out earlier, Councilmember Tate, the House of Representatives, I would be one member of a hundred and ten, which would mean that I would be on the team, and I would be willing to be a leader and a vocal voice in this regard. You know, when you talk about going to Lansing and what kinds of things would I do, the important thing to also keep in mind is that this is a very complex issue. There are other stakeholders that really need to be engaged in the process to understand what is the win-win for the entire community, so that we can ensure that we have infrastructure and funding in place to move it forward.
Thank you. Ms. Gay-Dunyogo?
Thank you. I would do what I'm doing right now, continue to work with labor, having conversations with them and other legislators to make sure the deal that's negotiated will be in the best interest of Detroit. We all remember the deals that was negotiated with SMART, in most instances, that did not favor Detroit. Working with Simco to make sure again that we have the necessary fleet that's up to date, the support for the drivers, and to make sure that we have routes that make sure that people are getting to their jobs in and out of the city of Detroit. We want to make sure, make sure that working people can get to working jobs.
Thank you. Ms. Hampton?
Thank you. Yes, I do support it. In order to compete with other new age cities, we have to have some type of new age transportation system. I would support going to Lansing, trying to get funding for it, making sure that it's not taxing any of our seniors.
Thank you. And now, we're off to the lightning round. Again, two minutes, and the first person who raised, did I get you? I thought we started with you. Okay. The lightning round, two minutes total, first person to raise their hand, they have an opportunity to answer the question. Will you work to try to repeal the emergency manager law and how? Ms. Gay-Dunyogo?
Absolutely. It's work that I've been doing. Respect my vote. I think I'm the only opponent of mine that's up here that's worked against the EM, very vocal, written about it, marched about it, protested about it, and advocated about it, helped to take the positions with Michigan Forward, Brandon Jessup, to make sure that we repeal. I understand as a teacher in the classroom with PA-72, what that did to us. It transformed and morphed into PA-4. I held town halls and forums to educate Detroit on what that was. It went from PA-4 to PA-436. The governor shoved that down our throat, and I ask the rest of the people up here, where have you been on this issue before running for office?
Thank you. And we have another question here from the audience. If the Republicans retain control of legislature, how will you effectively represent your constituents and their concerns? I'm sorry? I was told that Sherri has her hand up first.
Whether we have a majority in the House or Senate, we would like to have a majority, but whether we have a majority or not, we have to be savvy enough to work across the aisles. We have to be, and understand that we have to negotiate in the best interest of Detroit. We have to have strong leadership that understands that we're not going to always get what we want if we're in a minority, but building relationships, something that I've done in my community service and my community organizing is key and critical. Our community is very diverse, made up of different people with different issues and different concerns and different needs. We have to be able to appeal to people with a different lens than our lens, but also come away from the table with a deal that represents Detroit.
Thank you. And there are no other questions from the audience. We would like to thank each and every one of you for being here once again. Please give them a round of applause.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I am Latoya Morgan, as I said, I'm from CDAC, Community Development Advocates of Detroit, and we are a nonprofit membership organization here in the city. I will be moderating the panel for District, House of Representative Districts Nine and Ten, as well as State Senate District. I just want to give a little overview of the rules. We have our panelists here, our candidates here tonight. Everybody will be given a chance to answer one of four questions from all of the partner organizations. Everybody will have thirty seconds. Please watch the gentleman here, he will flash signs at thirty, fifteen, and five seconds. Please follow his signs, and stop your comments when it says "time's up." As well, at the end of the flight, we will have a two-minute lightning round session for two minutes, and we will, that's where we will solicit questions from the audience. Please look for the lady in the black and white with the cards, if you have a question you would like to ask the panel, and they will bring them up here. And during the two-minute lightning round, everybody who, the first person to raise their hand will have an opportunity to answer that question. We will only do it for two minutes. As well as if someone raises their hand at the same time, if that person has already had an opportunity to answer a question, the first question, we will just, the second person to raise their hand will be the person to answer the question. So, I am going to start. Also, at the end, for any candidates who are still here, we will give you an opportunity for one minute to actually give a statement about your candidacy and your platform. So, that's for any candidate who is still here at the end of the two flights that we have, this one and the State Senate. So, we will start now with our questions from our partners. We have Armin Harachian from Excellent Schools Detroit, Johnny Turnage from Moses, and Councilmember Tate, who will be representing District One. Yes, and so, I forgot to do this. We will start with a one-minute introduction from all of the candidates. We'll start with Mr. Roy McAllister.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to give honor to God who's ahead of my life. My name is Roy McAllister Jr. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm running for State House District Ten. The reason that I'm running, ladies and gentlemen, is people have forgotten, these elected officials have forgotten, that it is the people that is the government. And when you elect folks that represent you, then people, when you're elected, you will collect them on their resume. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been your commanding officer of Detroit Homicide Section. I spent three years in Iraq. Three of the, two of those years, I was the regional commander of the northern pride, northern provinces of Iraq. Investigated with the Federal Defender's Office currently, and I'm currently also an adjunct professor with ITT Tech at University of Phoenix. Ladies and gentlemen, you have to look at the person that you're sitting up there who is not going to turn on you, who is going to represent you, and who is going to be there. That person is Roy McAllister Jr., and I am asking for your vote. Thank you so very much, and look forward to talking with you.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Love, and I too am running for State Representative in District Ten. And so, for those of you who don't know, District Ten includes not only Detroit, but all of Redford Township. I am currently a professor, adjunct professor at Mary Grove College, and I'm also the director of Theater Operations, where I have served for thirteen years, and I also serve as an adjunct for Wayne County Community College District. My platform, I'm running on safety, education, and jobs, because I think anyone who wants to serve the public, that's our primary responsibility, to keep our citizens safe, to make sure we have free and quality education, and that we are employed so that we could be constructive and productive citizens that add to our community. Again, my name is Leslie Love, and I look forward to this debate, or forum, and I thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Jay Johnson. I am a township trustee from Redford Township, and I've worked my entire professional life here in the city at Wayne State University, as well as volunteering in the Detroit Public School Systems at Murray Wright, Northwestern, as well as Cody High School, as an advocate coach for young people to get an opportunity to advocate on the issues that they care about. I'm running for State Representative because I'm tired. I'm very tired of seeing year after year the budgets that I'm working on in my township, less revenue coming back to the things that we need to fix our roads, to fix our schools, to make sure that we've got the high quality of life that we need in our township and in this district and in the entire state of Michigan. I will work hard and tirelessly. I have been an advocate for young people, moving young people forward to, as the president of the Michigan Junior Chamber, the JCs, I have been training young mentors to go out and work in their communities to try to create positive change, and that's been my message since day one, is creating positive change in the state of Michigan by making sure we have what we need here in District Ten. Thank you very much, Jay Johnson, State Representative.
My name is Brandon Jessup. I'm a candidate for State Representative here in Michigan's 10th House District as well. I'm proud to say that Sunday the Detroit Free Press branded our campaign as a future of democratic leadership in this state, and they said that because we not only led the campaign to repeal Michigan's emergency manager law, but we are the first campaign here in this district and all across metro Detroit to present an economic plan that lowers taxes on working families, but also raises wages for all of those in this state and attracts people back to this state to move Michigan forward. It's a pleasure to sit here before you, to come with a fifteen-year track record, not only just of appealing horrendous laws like the emergency manager law, but protecting voter rights and protecting equal opportunity across this great state of ours. My name is Brandon Jessup. I'm a candidate for State Representative for Michigan's 10th House District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to start with the questions from our panel now. We'll start with Johnny Turnage from Moses.
That's great. What will you do specifically to increase employment among youth, women, and people of color?
We're going to start with Mr. McAllister with the answer to that question.
The main thing is education. Education moves forward. There's a number of people that are going from one career endeavor to another. We need to also think about retraining the certification. There's a number of jobs that's coming down. Transportation is coming forward. People say, okay, the jobs are there, but if the people are not certified and if people are not trained, then therefore they cannot get the jobs. So, my job is to, and state, and the state house is to reach up to those federal legislators, grab those dollars, and forward those dollars down to the municipalities. Thank you so very much.
So, how do I help young people and women get jobs? I let them know where they're available. So, a lot of times, there's a disconnect between where the opportunity is and the person who needs the job. And so, one of the things I would do as State Representative is definitely work with neighborhood associations and churches, because I think we have the privilege of sitting in a position where we are aware of things that a lot of people don't know of. And so, when opportunities present themselves, I'll have a direct line to community leaders, to church leaders, to residents, to say, "Look here, there's opportunity."
My answer to this question is twofold. Number one, I've already been doing it. I've been working with the Michigan JCs for a long time, bringing young, active citizens into the fray to train them, to give them the skills that they need to find the jobs that are out there. Number two, I think our state needs to take a heavy look at the way jobs are. People are underemployed, underpaid. We need to find better-paying jobs, we need to ensure that there's good opportunities for economic development and economic investment in this state, so that way, when they graduate these schools, they have the opportunities to stay here in Michigan and not leave our state.
Johnny, could you please repeat the question? What will you do specifically to increase employment for youth, women, and people of color?
First, we got to get back to actually living to the promise of equal opportunity here in Michigan. In 2006, Michigan decided to ban affirmative action in employment and contract again in this state. I fought to keep affirmative action here in this state. That's number one, we got to bring that back. Number two, get rid of Education Achievement Authority. Too many children now are being trained to do nothing in this unfunctional system. Our children are losing every day. So, we can talk about coming back from Lansing in January to getting something done, but right now, we've lost two generations due to this inadequate system. Let's start there first with real reform that brings real opportunity back in a functional way. And third, is establishing community service centers in the district.
We have to cut you off, Mr. Jessup, thank you so much. We're going to move on to our second question from Mr. Armin Harachian from Excellent Schools Detroit.
Good evening. Two major votes in education reform in Lansing in recent years. One was to lift the charter cap, and the other was to expand the EAA or to formalize the EAA. Today, 7,000 students are in the Education Achievement Authority in Detroit, and roughly 50,000 and growing students are in charter schools in Detroit. It's interesting, no place in the state did those two votes matter more than here in Detroit. What would you have voted, yes or no, and why?
Let's start with Ms. Leslie Love, please.
Check one, two, okay. I would not have voted to definitely extend the charter cap. I think it's extending too quickly, and/or for the EEA. We have definitely, we're set up in a situation where we have two separate but unequal educational systems. And being an educator who works in the system, knowing that not only those rules, but how we evaluate teachers are different, how teachers are employed, and the resources that they have available to them. And so, I want to make sure that we have adequate equipment and resources for our teachers, and so, no, I would not have supported.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Welcome to Mr. Johnson.
No on lifting the cap, no on EAA. All those things were designed to do was destroy the public school system and the union teachers that were teaching in there. Those charter schools are not protecting our students because there's not any kind of regulations of those individual teachers that are there. The EEA was the second kick in the pants to each of those individual school districts because now they're looking at completely dividing. As you pull more students out of each one of those individual public schools, that's less money, resources, and it eventually makes it all fall apart.
I've already said no to the EAA. When we talk about charter schools, they do provide an opportunity for our unions, our trade associations, to get engaged right now and teach our kids the skills they need to actually be employed. So, I support charter schools, I'm very, I don't really think the cap helped us at all, but we have a gap in education funding that we need to close. That's where we start first, and giving an established education system that helps for all, and helps our children be the future that they should be.
Mr. McAllister?
I would vote no and no. First of all, as has been stated already, but also the fact is, we have to stop experimenting on our children, and we have to stop thinking about funding and putting money in our pockets as opposed to educating our youth. If we don't start educating our youth and putting them in positions where they can take over, not only for themselves, but for the state of Michigan, also for the United States. We have to start looking at our future, and our youth is our future, and we have to consider these policies that are detrimental to them.
Thank you. We'll have our next question from Council, we'll have our next question from Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, we all have differences of opinions on an emergency manager, should he be here, should he not be here? Reality is, the individual is here. And so, my question is, on a scale of A through F, with A being the highest, how would you grade the emergency manager or's handling of the city's financial emergency, and what, if anything, would you have done differently?
Let's start this questions with Mr. Jay Johnson.
If I were to give him a grade, I'm going to give it to you at the end. Number one, I think that he should not have gone after the retirement, people, all of the different retirements that he was going after. He needed to leave that piece out of it, and look at all the different vultures that came in that tried to make money off of the backs of the city of Detroit. If that was the one thing that I would have got him to do, is to leave that community out of this, they have worked hard enough and stayed in this community and contributed to the success of this community. In that case, on that thing alone, I'd have given him a D.
Kevin Orr, Rick Snyder, both got an F. Period, it's an F. The city of Detroit could have done everything they need to do with a mayor and with our democracy process to get us on the track forward. Everything that the emergency manager has done has done nothing but outsource almost $200 million out of our community immediately. The emergency manager is absolutely an economy killer. I've gone on petition to do that, to repeal that law, and as State Representative, I will introduce legislation to repeal the emergency manager law on day one.
Mr. McAllister?
Before the simple fact that the city of Detroit had the opportunity to do a forensic audit, therefore, they could have controlled their own destiny without letting the state come in and look at that. The citizens of Michigan voted for Public Act 436 down. As has been stated, Kevin Orr and Rick Snyder have come in and they have just ripped this city apart, taken from senior citizens, taken from pensioners, and this has to stop. So, I would vote and give them an F. And the state legislator, I also will work towards reforming this, 436 and removing it. Thank you.
Ms. Love?
Thank you. You know, my grade for the emergency manager is irrelevant. What is relevant in our city at this time is that we move forward and we transition leadership back to local control. We can continue to talk about and grade and evaluate, but at this time, I look to you, Councilman Tate, the other councilmen, our commissioners, our future state representatives and state senators, to make sure that we work collaboratively, so that work in the things that he has done, that we do not approve of, that we do better and build upon what we have learned from this experience.
Thank you, Ms. Love. The last question will come from CDAC. CDAC is a community development organization, and we work with community development organizations doing place-based work and trying to change the face of their neighborhood. They try and tell positive stories of the work that their communities are doing. How will you, in your role as State Representative, tell, talk about Detroit and tell the story of Detroit in the state legislature?
I have a long track record of building coalitions across the board from nonprofit organizations to political groups. Our campaign plan says it very clearly, we want to establish community service centers in both areas of the 10th House District, Detroit and Redford Township, to give that open-door opportunity for Detroiters and Redford Township residents to tell their story. It's my job as a State Representative to extend the powers of the office to the community at that community level, so that you guys can do the work, and that's what I want to do first, then we can tell our own story.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson, you're next, yeah.
As, you know, I was sitting there and I read the mission statement, and it's very similar to the mission statement of the organization that I'm the president of currently, the Michigan JCs, as I've said, which is to provide development opportunities that empower young people to create positive change. It's very similar in sense that the community is where we need the positive change, and as a result of that, I have been working, we have launched a Wayne State University Junior Chamber chapter. By the end of this year, we will actually launch a Detroit Junior Chamber chapter to give young people here the opportunity to go out and create that positive change in[1756.74] give young people here the opportunity to go out and create that positive change in synergy with CDAC. Thank you.
Will you please repeat the question?
The question is basically, how will you talk about Detroit in the state legislature?
That would be so easy. Um, one, I will talk about April, who opened up Good Cakes and Bakes on Illinois, who has some of the most delicious muffins. I would talk about, um, uh, Don, who opened up 1917 American Bistro. I'd talk about Shinola. I would talk about my neighborhood associations, uh, the many of them in our, in our communities that are strong and standing. I would ring, yeah, say it at the highest mountain, how wonderful Detroit is. It would be so easy. And, and then it's the messenger that comes with the enthusiasm and energy to know that Detroit is wonderful and it's a great place to live and be educated and grow up. Yes, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, 30 seconds is not enough time. But the fact of the matter is, I would talk about how Detroit used to be the Motown city. It used to be the things that we looked at, it was the Mecca of the world. Everybody admired Detroit. When you talked about, when you said you was from Detroit, everybody odd and wanted to talk to you. I have lived it, I have worked it, and I am about the compassion of Detroit, and therefore I ask for you to send me to Lansing so that I can continue my talk and my pride for the city of Detroit. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. Now, as we get to the end of the panel, we are now moving into our two-minute lightning round. As I said at the beginning, this is the lightning round where we will, for, for two minutes, ask questions of the panel. The first person to raise their hand will be the person to answer the question. If on the second question, the person who raised their hand on the first time raises their hand first, it will be the second person who raised their hand who will be, um, given the opportunity to answer the question. This, these questions come from the, uh, audience. DPS students are given an estimated 70, $7,260 per student. Why hasn't this amount increased? This has been the same amount for roughly about seven years. What would you do to increase this amount in, in your term as, uh, State Representative? Ms. Leslie Love?
Um, I think we have to be about the business of advocating and being in the room to have those conversations, um, to raise, uh, our people, our per-student, um, rate. And it's our responsibility, I think all of us, to have those conversations and to be champions for that.
The next question is, how will you enforce Title VI? Where can contractors participate in this program? And what are the provisions that they are required to hire minorities as federal law, uh, allows this?[1682.53]